I'd like to call a special city council meeting, December 4th, 217, to order. Please call the roll.
Isom, here. Gage, here. Zingy, here. Cuse, here. Kiper, here. Seaberton, here. Flora, is absent.
Please rise. We pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under Communications, we have some laid on the table that will need to be dealt with. We have a summary revision and appropriate reserves by funds. Budget update number nine, which is a request for the Fleet Department to add radio repeater install capital projects. And number 10, a correction to the UAS Library Staffing Plan. Do we have any persons to be heard tonight? Seeing none, we'll move through those. We're on unfinished business, Resolution Number 172679, adopting the budget for the year 218 appropriations from the General Fund for the physical year 218 that you've heard from the November 30th meeting. So we left off, we probably should move these onto the table. So Budget Update 8 takes no action. It again shows where we are in the revisions. Item number nine, 218 General Government Operating Capital Budget. Update Number 9, request from the Fleet Department to add radio repeater install capital projects to a 218 budget. So I have a motion.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I'm going to the City Council amend the 2018 General Government Operating and Capital Budget for the Police Department to add the radio repeater install capital project in the amount of $96,570 and authorize funding from the Public Works Sales Tax Fund.
Then move in the seconded. Judy?
I think Joe does a good job, or Chief does a good job of explaining this.
I guess my only question is what took so long?
Right.
I mean, we were talking about this 35 years ago, having repeaters over on Gravina. Or having, because wall holes in the fire department. Why are we finally doing this in 2017? Why didn't we do this years ago, I guess?
Come on up, Joe. I like the tie.
Yeah, it's very festive.
Good evening. I can tell you that, yeah, we've been dealing with these radio issues since I was hired. They've gotten much worse over the last 10 to 12 years. 2015, we hired Alaska ProCom, Alaska, to do a survey study for us. And I don't know why that wasn't acted on immediately, but there was quite a few suggestions. But one of the immediate actions that they noted for our system was the installation of repeaters on Gravina. This proposal I put together for you guys is going to cover police and fire. And it should clear up, according to the tech that came down into the survey, according to the company that put the survey together for us, this should solve a lot of radio problems for us. It should be night and day.
Carl, since this is going to benefit both the Fleet and Fire, should the funding be split evenly between departments? I know it's the same fund, but, you know, they're both going to be responsible for it at some point.
I'll defer to the Finance Director.
I guess it's really up to the City Council. The Fleet Department took the lead on this particular project and asked it to be included in their budget. But you're correct, the source of funding is the same no matter what. And the capital project is a one-time-only project. So it's not going to show up again, other than the perhaps the maintenance costs that may be incurred in the future.
And the cost usually to accommodate the E911 system is budgeted in the Police Department traditionally.
All right. Thank you.
Where's the repeater at now? On top of the building?
There is no repeater right now. The antennas we have on top of the building broadcast from the Police Department and go out from there.
That's what I mean. That's the only place there's an antenna on that building.
We have an antenna right up there, and that is part of the problem is the line of sight radios we use are not, it's just never worked very well.
High Mountain was, should have been done years ago.
Well, yeah. I just remember we had this discussion issue with Karen, but he was first putting something over there back in the early 80s. We had the same discussion with the Police Department. Yeah, it makes perfect sense. So I was kind of stunned to find out it never happened. Because, yeah, it should have been done 30 years ago. I'm not blaming you, Chief.
No.
You've been around a while.
Anything else? Katie, would you please call the roll?
Isom, yes. Gage, yes. Zingy, yes. Cuse, yep. Kiper, absolutely. Seaberton, yes.
That brings us to 218 General Government Operating and Capital Budget. Update Number 10, UAS Library Staffing Plan Correction. I have a motion.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I'm going to the City Council amend the 2018 General Government Operating and Capital Budget for the Library Department's UAS Library Division by decreasing the FTE for the Library Assistant to position from .91 to .69, reducing appropriations in the regular salaries and wages, payroll taxes, pension, workers' compensation, and other benefits in the amount of $8,871, $670, $1,510, $40, and $230 respectively, and reducing charges for services revenue by $11,321.
Then move in the seconded. Judy?
It's a reduction. Let's be quiet.
Katie, would you call the roll, please?
Seaberton?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Cuse?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Isom? Yes.
Thank you. That brings us into where we left off, which is Cemetery Summary R1. One of the comments we had in the transmittals is the future funding of the cemetery. And it's kind of hard to charge for a plot and take care of it forever, rent a spot. So I don't know what the answer is to that. And I'm sure it's something that we should continue to work on to see how we're going to fund that.
Are we still, the numbers in here, about the, was it like 13 burials and eight cremations? It was like something very low number, right?
Yeah, I'd like, did we say those numbers had changed, Mark?
Did they change? Did I miss that? I mean, it seemed incredibly low considering I keep track of who dies every year. You've had like 300 people die in catchings last year.
Yeah, the updated numbers are much higher. And I defer to Steve Shelt, who's here, who I think has some up-to-the-minute counts.
Steve?
So what numbers are we looking at?
Well, we, the...
Somewhere in here, I'm not sure, where, oh, yeah, it says, "To date there have been eight full casket and 15 cremated interns." This was a month or so ago. So I guess, how many full casket burials have we had this year and how many cremains?
Well, I just, we're right today, we have a total of 40 burials and cremains. And that's about as high as it's been since I took this job 13 years ago. We're going to continue to have more cremains and burials. But, and I guess maybe it's a good place to make my plug. You folks need to consider where you're going to expand to, because we're out of ground. But we're basically almost full for plot burials, ground burials. And our new pavilion, our new...
The garden.
Yeah, this is half-full already. And so we're needing space. But you just, there's no rhyme and reason to how those things work. We had a, before, when I made my reports out earlier this fall, we were like 20, total of 20 down from where we are today. And just all of a sudden, in the last month, month and a half, we just had a ration of deaths. And typically, we'll get a bunch right after the holidays.
So Steve, we still have a little bit of room in that upper section by the crypts?
Right, we have the new section nine. And we've expanded, it's broken in half.
Yeah.
And the half we're working on right now, we've expanded it probably 50 or 60 graves, because there was a lot of space on the sides that we could utilize. And so the other half, which will probably have to be more than what the original section nine does. But then that's...
That is it. Okay. Any other questions, Steve? Thank you. That brings us down to R2. Mission, goals, accomplishments. R3, some of the changes. R4, we get into narratives. And R5, we get into some of the major capital outlays and infrastructure issues going on up there. It looks like we have a wall to replace and a few things like that.
Question.
Yes.
So when we expand, where's the, I mean, there's no place to go, right?
So when we talk about expansion, Carl, is there any properties available?
Again, I'd have to defer to Mr. Hilsen. That has not been on my radar. It is now. I will get together with Mark tomorrow and just start looking at that and bringing something back to council.
When I recall, we own kind of a pie-shaped up behind. But then to the right, there's going to, to the south, it's going to be Coast Guard property. And then to the north, it's a rock bluff.
Right, yeah. There aren't a lot of clear and obvious opportunities for expansion. So it's something we would have to look into in more detail.
So I know that we owned a piece of property out on the end of Shute. I don't know if we still own that or not, and that was a potential expansion for the cemetery at one time.
I, yes, there, I believe that's correct. And actually, I think the City Clerk and I discussed that a little bit. There are some caveats to that property that we'd have to look into a little closer. I believe it was originally a federal property, and there might be some strings attached in terms of how you can use it.
It's outside the city, too. Bearing capacity. So I assume we need to look, we'd be thinking about more crypts as well. That seems...
Well, even more so, and it seems that the crypts, and Steve can correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems they fill up on the, on the, on the one side, but not the other, so...
We want the view.
Right.
Actually, I was looking at the new one and thought, I'm not staring at the mountain for the rest of the journey.
Right.
I want to be looking across it.
Right, so there's something to that. So we need to consider that when we, when we do this next, yeah.
Okay.
I didn't know there was any back there. That's another thing to consider.
Yeah.
I ain't staring at a rock wall for the journey.
But again, this is all going to have to be done, but there's no funding source for it.
Right. It's not going to pay for itself.
Right, that's one of the things that we'll have to plan for as we move forward. Anybody else? Okay. Move this on to Public Works Streets. Summary's on S1. On S2. S3, the operating division.
Bob, a quick question. Back on S1, we're using some CBP money, or CPV money for the trash pickup during the season. We're going to need to change that or leave it alone. I just didn't leave it alone, but we've been trying to bury it or watch it.
If you want to be conservative, like we were relative to museum capital improvements, I think this would probably be a target. And that prior to now, look at going back to the traditional way of funding.
So we should change it to General Fund then or something?
Either General Fund or...
Or Public Works Self-Tax.
Public Works, whatever. Okay.
We must have lots of sales tax. You sure seem to.
Well, so before we went to CPV funding, we were using Public Works Self-Tax money.
We should just charge the visitors more sales tax.
You know, in Kena, there is...
I think as we move forward, they're going to, you know, as we have these discussions, a little bit off topic, but they're going to have to realize that in order to support those cruise ships and the extra passengers, the upwind stuff has to be part of the funding source from the CPV money, because we just...
Have you made that point in your letter?
Yes, it was in my letter, by the way. I've been screaming for you guys to agree.
Another question, Bob, then. The other monies we collect from them, for tying up and the other ones, those are restricted also? Do we, we couldn't do any pickup?
If you want to follow the viewpoint of industry as manifested in their most recent court filings, revenues collected by charges assessed against the ship, including passenger orphanage fees, they do not want to see spent anything that doesn't benefit the ship directly. And that's just the position they've taken.
Do we still take trash ships at all? No. Dump trash next to ships.
S4?
Well, you know, in Kena and Sabatana, they raise their taxes in the summer to subsidize for the tours that come along.
There's been that discussion.
Yeah.
S5? That's where we started to the narratives. Again, in regards to the operating division. S6? S7? S8, it's a seasonal litter program. And that is also coming out of the CPV funds.
That's the one I was speaking to.
Yeah.
Look at moving it.
S9? S10? S11? Brings us into major capital outlays, vehicle and moving equipment.
Yeah, Bob, I'm going to have one question, and I know we'll get into the details, but I'm concerned that we dropped the pavement overlay service repairs from $600,000 to $275,000. So I think we need to go fishing for some money, because otherwise the streets just continue to get worse.
Yeah, that was a dramatic client. But we do have some other big projects in regards to bridge repairs and some concrete surfacing. And then some other stuff up in Deer Mountain and Boswick that's going to be some kind of overlay or paving option.
You've also got the second phase of the Baden-Sprusen Hallway reconstruction that will be ongoing next year as well. We try to keep about the same amount in street work, but it's just now all in asphalt paving. That's why you see a reduced number for just general asphalt paving.
Anything else on S11? That moves us out of the Street Division into the Public Works Garage and Warehouse. That summary starts on P1. Dennis, if you would, one of the things I see in supplies is that that thing isn't growing very much. And I know that we have a pretty good-sized fleet. Are we keeping up with material, parts, pieces? I know you guys not only do vehicles, you do buildings, you do whatever, whatever comes at you.
Our, excuse me, our funds are going to start running low here at the end of the month as far as the amount of funds we have available for parts and such. So asked for an increase for this year, but we had to take it out of something else. It's going to be very skimpy. Price of the parts is going up, and some of our equipment is getting aged, and parts are getting difficult to find. So you're oftentimes really scavenging to keep things together.
Well, I know in the past, you were able to fix some things, but now they're mostly replacement parts with all the computerized stuff that we have these days. So I am a little concerned that if we don't stay up with that, we're going to fall behind.
Correct.
And I know that you can always come back through Carl and ask for more money, but I hope in some place in here, we may get a little money to add to those things. Because I know the cost of maintenance, if you don't do your maintenance, it's going to increase your costs later on down the line, so appreciate that. Thank you. P2? On to T3? Okay, T... We go on to the operating division on T4. And so under those parts, vehicle maintenance, materials and stuff, Carl, if you could, I know it sounds like you said we're going to run short this year, and we got to start over next year. And if that's not going to be enough, I don't, I don't know what the suggested amount might be.
I'll talk to Mr. Hilsen and Dennis. We'll come back to the...
Thank you.
...the supplement.
Thank you. Dennis, do we support any of the parts for the solid waste division at this point?
Possibly the only parts that we support solid waste with is just stuff that we've had sitting in our antiques for a while.
Okay.
But they pretty much are taking care of their own parts.
All right. Thank you. Brings us to T5? Getting in narrative, T6? T7? Public Works Capital Budget is on T8? Anything else with the Garage and Warehouse Division? Brings this on to U1, Public Works Building Maintenance Summary? So Carl, how many buildings do we have named here?
Many? I can't give you an exact number. I don't know if Mark or Steve...
Steve, man, what do you weigh?
More than six.
More than six?
Less than 35?
I did a count today because I thought that might come up. We have 27 buildings.
Oh.
90 of those are occupied.
And how many of you are there?
Me and one other.
27 buildings.
And temporary help when we get it.
Okay, okay. So are we keeping up?
No.
I kind of figured, yeah.
So seven were occupied? We used them for storage?
Yeah, parking garages, things like that.
Okay.
We should take a tour of all of our buildings.
That'd take a day.
Or not. Anytime, we can arrange it.
Not a bad idea.
It's due at the burrow all the time. We go out and look at the facilities.
It would be good to kind of see what they're up against, maybe.
Well, maybe we'll do that. If we get through this, we'll look at setting up a couple of different appointments to go around and look at them.
We can charter a van. It would be no problem.
Okay, thank you. Like that? Yeah, this is City Hall.
We'll wear a City Hall. We've been in here.
U2? Practical and objective accomplishments. U3?
I have a question.
Yes.
So is this the section where we would, these are the folks that would deal with all the derelict buildings that, you know, last year we had a list we got rid of.
In part.
So they would have to deal with those, and that's not included in the count, I'm sure.
If we have to board up a building or something like that, it would be charged to this account?
Okay. Three or four? So here's where the operating changes show that they are adding a maintenance technician. So are temporary employees work a little bit different, or they're regulated by how they serve their time?
Correct.
So you could bring, I mean, it's not like you, it's not easy to keep a returning temporary, because they have to have so much time off or something.
In between.
So this isn't just like a temporary you'd have on for, you know, to get really comfortable with everything, and then you lay them off, and they come right back. And you've got to lay them off for, I think, a considerable amount of time, if I remember right. Yes, Steve?
Yeah, the temporary help scenario has changed over the last few years with Obamacare and the Affordable Care Act. A person gets hired for six months and has to take 30 days off, so they're not considered full-time. At that point, he works until he has 1,500 hours within a year. At that point, he has to take 13 weeks off to start the six months rollover again. So basically, in a year, he's working nine months. So usually at that point, they don't want anything to do with it.
Okay. Thank you. Doesn't make it easy. U5? Yeah.
Realistically, to maintain 27 buildings, what would you say the best amount of employees you would need to keep up with the workload?
Well, if it's up to me? Well, if it's up to me?
I know, if it was up to you.
Careful now.
Well, you know what to say, one at a time and uh, I mean, we're, we're, you know, grossly understaffed. We got me and one other guy and occasional temporary help. Um, we're lucky to have an opportunity to put one more person on, but in reality, probably should have four full-time people with possibly one summertime temporary help, which would be a temporary position just for the summer to, you know, help with uh pressure washing and painting and things like that. But I would say for this job to be done right and uh correctly and keep up on our workload, um, me and three others would probably be about what it would really take.
U5, we started the narratives. U6. U7. Moving into City Hall O and M. Okay, U8. Moving on to U9. U10. And we have the shoreline maintenance building on U11. That was an inherited building, correct?
Correct.
We still ha- have a pumper there, Steve? There's still a fire truck in that building?
Yes, it's a, it's a tanker truck.
Tanker truck, that's what's in there, okay, thank you. U12, moving on to U13, orphaned buildings. Let's just move to U14. U15. U16. I noticed that um we still have fire station, what is the condition there? Is that the building home of its own, Steve, or do we, I mean? The old fire hall over here, they use it as a carving shed, we still have heat in it, of course, but, and we're using it for storage, I think?
Correct. In fact, um that's where the work was done on the totem pole that was brought down by uh the Centennial Building, which will be, the process of putting that up will start tomorrow and culminate on Wednesday, weather permitting.
Okay.
The Johnson's done already?
Yeah.
The Johnson's post done already?
Yeah.
Oh wow.
It went, went very well.
Is there, is there a ceremony surrounding that?
I know that Anita Maxwell is in discussions with the Tonga's tribe. I don't, I think there is something that hasn't come together with anything definitive yet. I will check tomorrow and if there is something, I will get the word out to, to council.
Yeah, Bob?
Yes.
Quick question, um, Bob, do you know what the value of all of our buildings are?
I know that there's historical costs. I have to look it up. And I know the insured replacement value, but I do not know the market value.
Well, all I'm fishing for is we're spending about a half million dollars on what I would suspect is way under a budget if you were taking, if what normally you would spend on building maintenance. And that's my suspicion. So it's just thinking out loud for a minute. But if you could look it up, it would be, but don't go to lot work, I mean, unless you can punch the button.
Would you cut any maintenance in Ketchikan, what could possibly go wrong?
Yeah, the problem, none of these buildings are getting younger, I mean, they're all getting older and they're gonna require more and more.
Just like this.
Speak for yourself.
Yeah, I'll thank you, Bob.
Lock on wood, please.
Anything else on uh building maintenance? Thanks, Steve. Brings us down to V1, public works solid waste. There's three divisions there, disposal, recycling, collection. Changes to V2. V3. In there. V4. Brings us to V5. Lenny, I see under the six fifty oh one telecommunications, you've gone up by thirty-six percent. Is that for new phone system or the added services?
That would be, I guess, would be kinda added services. Um, the reason that went up, we used to have that server upstairs, but now everything comes through downtown. And with the waste works, we had to add, you know, faster internet to, you know, or whatever we needed to communicate. But uh, the server and stuff that we used to have up there, we don't have, uh, which is good. Uh, cause everything that's down here, the way it's set up, it's more protected. Cause we had the one go out and we lost, we lost some data that they were able to recover, but that, that's why it's higher.
Okay, thank you. V6, running the narratives. V7. I see that our disposal service is up over a million dollars now. Think we started that, it was almost, what, six hundred thousand or something like that? So it's, it's increased dramatically over the years. V8. V9. Now we're doing recycling division on V10. Yes?
Says the, well, the goals for next year is to complete the design, construction, for expansion of solid waste handling and recycling facility. I don't see, I, I, I'm, I'm not seeing a, a dollar amount here, obviously I'm missing it. Um, is that, is that what we're mostly paid for? We're not looking at a large expense to, to accomplish that this year, or?
This is the one with uh contract for the foundation?
Okay.
It's just before you, we haven't gotten any other costs in yet.
Okay, got it.
That's page one, put the foundation, put the foundation down, we still have to buy a building and put it on there.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I was thinking, I wasn't seeing, I wasn't seeing the buying of anything on this, I was seeing.
V11. Recycling.
I guess just a quick, in, in general, how is the recycling department doing? I mean, are we, are we not losing our shirts anymore on that? Is it, is actually coming near close to, you know? I mean, I, I, I'm not saying it's not a thing, I'm just saying that it's, it's never paid for itself.
I think that uh, you've probably seen a memo that uh I sent to Carl a few weeks ago about the Chinese and the paper market.
Yeah.
Um, right now, I mean, um, paper, cardboard and mixed papers dropping dramatically. We're really not gonna know what the impact is. Um, my guess is at one point, um, you know, it's, it's gonna get pretty low and, and, but if it's cheaper than paying disposal, then, you know, we're still better off to recycle it. But I think there, you know, depending what the market does, there may be a cost involved um in next year.
What would be the, I know a lot of places are going to no plastic. So what would be the difference in, I know like with New York and different places, they charge for bags unless you bring your own bag. So there's like a, a tax to get rid of the plastic.
Yeah, that's a, a different grade plastic, and I think some communities where they were taking one through seven. And I think that's kinda the problem right now on, on these coal mingles being shipped and there's just really no market three through seven. Um, you know, and, and hopefully next year, we're looking to get into plastics. And if we do, it'll be number one and number two only. We're not gonna get the stuff that is like a roller coaster and nobody wants. So a, a lot of that, and I say even on consumers on buying, or if you've got bags you can reuse, that you reuse at the store, you know, that all cuts down.
The problem is too, is the collection and separation and storage. Um, if you're gonna ship plastic, it takes a large volume before you make a bale, so you're gonna have to have some kinda covered storage for that.
It takes twenty-eight yards of plastic to make one single bale. So, and we would need about thirty or forty bales for a trailer, so, you know, that's where we run into issues. Because anything that's baled, if you baled plastics or aluminum, um, and those materials and you stored it outside, anything water hits and comes off as leach aid. So uh, we're hoping with, with the, the building that we're adding, that, that'd give us more space in our building, cause we're currently doing maintenance in there to be able to store a few bales in there. Um, in the future, and that's the idea with number one and number two plastics.
And so what's number one and number two plastics?
Got milk jugs, jugs, um, water bottles, laundry, laundry detergent bottles.
Okay. Number one, HTP is your clear milk bottles. Number two, or any of the colored, like your laundry detergent that comes in, period bottle, stuff like that. Then number one is your clear plastic with the lids removed, you can't have lids removed.
Yeah, and those markets on some of that type of commodity prices, I mean, those are still up there around three hundred a ton. So there's some good pricing involved with it.
What do you do with lids?
Lids, they, they go in the garbage. No lids.
And that's one of the problems, is we're so far removed from the market and our shipping costs are so high, it's hard to make these recycled pencils. It's nice to do them sometime, but in, we've always looked at and add to the fact is if it displaces a disposal fee, you can afford to do it. But once those start to get closer and closer, uh, it may not make sense.
It, it, for us, it's not so much disposal. Well, we pay per ton, you got transfer stations down in the states playing that, but with us, it's the shipping. Uh, in Colorado, it was a trucking, they didn't do anything there, but you know, we're pushing sixteen, seventeen hundred dollars a container, it's a pretty good expense.
Thanks, Lenny. V12. Filling the recycling, moving into the narrative. V13. V14. This is coming into collections. V15.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
So I'm just curious what your fines were for this last year for bears? Where people weren't, had to comply with the law? How they um, I don't know, the same people of, I don't know.
As far as the solid waste department, we don't write any fines.
Oh.
But uh, what I can tell you is uh, uh, the system that, that has seemed to work well the last few years, you know, if I get calls, which I tend to get a few, uh, I go and visit people, um, and give them literature and talk to them about what they can do with putting a strap on and stuff. Um, I'll do that once or twice. The third time, I'll, I'll call the, the chief and he'll send an officer out there and that usually gets their attention. So, you know, after that, I, I rarely get multiple, 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 other than the one going up to landfill hill, which I think we resolved late last summer.
So we have five uh collectors, five, five garbage persons?
Uh, five.
I think it's just the same, I'm not sure what she means by that. It seems like.
Yeah, we got, we got four collectors and we got one guy that runs the hook truck.
That's amazing that they can do the entire city in a week with four people.
It does, and, and the other part of that is just some of the service we do, cause you know, the boardwalks and, and uh, all the additional stuff that we do, it, it, it is amazing, they do a great job.
The thing that's amazing, most of them do with the smile on their face.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
They decorate their trucks at Christmas.
It's a good department.
V16. V17, we're in the narrative for collection division. V18. Down to V19. Costs that are associated. Any other questions on collection? Seeing none, let's move into W1, public works wastewater. W2, division statement, roles, accomplishments. W3. Give a breakdown on division summary, managers, funding, personnel. Uh, W4, this division has a few more changes in their budget than most. W5. W6. W7. W eight? W nine? W ten? Uh, upgrades and replacements of wearing parts? Big expenses, uh, vehicles factor? Anything else on wastewater? So the next section will be harbors, if there's no, um, objections by council, I'd like to postpone harbors and ports until feedback. We'll have that on the December seventh calendar. Give him opportunities to talk about his budget. And then if there's, uh, objections, we'll defer that for the meeting of the seven. So that brings us down to, uh, Z one. Bob, do you wanna talk a little bit about risk management?
Risk management, uh, covers all of the city's insurance programs except for health insurance, so that includes property liability, terrain, excess liability, professional, um, law enforcement liability. Um, the cost of insurance went up, um, six years for a number of reasons. Uh, number one, the, we get a rebate from our insurance pool, and the rebate's been running about a hundred thousand dollars, and it's based on the experience of the pool. Uh, that rebate is cut in half, and so that is, um, being passed on to us, just a reduction, uh, in the rebate which produces our premium. Uh, second reason is the market is, is starting to tighten up. So insurance premiums went up quite a bit, uh, without July first renewal. Still very competitive compared to what we should have paid going, you know, with the different carriers, it's still, it's going up. Uh, and then the third reason, um, our properties were reappraised for replacement value, and as a result of that, all of our, uh, property, uh, premiums went up. And, uh, so we think, uh, the renewal for next year, coming up July first, is going to be fairly flat. But the fact that the, our policies run from July one to July one, the increase you saw this year is gonna carry over into the third tab in next year. So other than that, I think, uh, we've got really good coverage, uh, the carrier does a real good job for us. Um, all of our policies are either with, um, Alaska National. We've been, uh, worker companies with Alaska National, we've been with Alaska National since the eighties, uh, very, very good company. And then the rest of our policies are with Alaska Public Entity Insurance with the pool. Small municipalities and school districts coming together to use their purchasing power to keep their premiums down, and it worked out really well for us. But there was a point in time when we were spending close to two million dollars in premiums, and our brokers were able to cut that amount down significantly, and they've done a real good job for us.
Yes, Nick?
Yeah, Bob, I know in the past we've, I've asked the question, but, uh, do we keep comparing what we're paying for, if, with these folks with, if, say we went with Alaska and the municipal league, they've got a insurance arm and other things there, and I know that other, other communities are pretty happy with them. Seems to be working, so I don't know whether we'd be any better off or not.
Well, we have a independent broker that works for us, and that's their job to assess the market. And they have advised us, due to the type of entity we are, you know, we do an awful lot of stuff here. We got sports and harbor, hospitals, public utilities, and they're the opinion that the plan that we have in place now is actually better than AML.
Okay. Anything else on risk?
Yeah, one more question. Do we, do we pay this broker a, a fee?
We pay the broker a fee, it's a fixed fee, it's not a, it's not a percentage, so they don't, they don't, uh, it pays more if they place it with a company that has a higher premium. We have talked about doing a consenting fee when we get our, after renewal, but I decided it would not be in our best interest. And their fee has been very, very constant, I, I think, uh, I can't remember exactly what the numbers were, but, um, at one point, they were charging us forty-five, about forty, forty-five thousand dollars. They had to, no change in it, in their fee for between eight to ten years. And we agreed with a fee increase, and it went to seventy thousand, seventy-five thousand, and they haven't increased the fee in about ten years, but they've been pretty fair on the prices.
Anything else on risk? Brings us to debt service, do you wanna go through that, Bob?
Okay, debt service, uh, one thing the council needs to be aware of, this is not all of the city's debt service. The debt service on this page only pertains to debt that is not paid for by an enterprise fund or revenue generating fund. For example, KPU debt not included. And this debt will be for KPU, it's an enterprise fund. Likewise, harbor debt and wastewater debt, because you're a revenue generating fund, their debt service is not included. So what you've got here is just debt that is covered from basic property tax. So you're looking at the hospital, uh, you're looking at, um, the proposed lease, you're looking at the fire station and the library station. So our total debt, uh, service here is relatively flat, except for the proposed, um, lease to acquire fire apparatus. That is going to increase our debt service by roughly three hundred and fifty thousand dollars over last year. And one thing I would like to point out, if you look at page double A two, if you look at under debt instrument, the very first, uh, line item, with the two thousand and fifteen refunding of the hospital GO bonds, those were the bonds that we issued back in nineteen ninety-seven. Those bonds have matured, and that's why we're not showing the budget for twenty eighteen. But likewise, if you look at just a couple of lines down to the two thousand and fourteen hospital GO bonds, notice that the debt service payment increased from one million, seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred thousand, to two million, five hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred. And the reason for that increase is we, we planned it that way because we wanted the extra payment to kick in when the old bond matured in, in twenty seventeen. So the two million, five hundred and thirty-three thousand, that's what, we're going to be stopped paying for the next, um, uh, the next, uh, twenty-five years.
Okay. Any questions? Brings us to transfer and advances?
Transfers and advances is, uh, it's a little bit complicated to follow, but the intent here is to show the user, the council, the public, how we move money from one fund to another fund. And if you refer back to the, what we call the C one page, that's the summary at the beginning of the budget, it shows the beginning of fund balance, the revenues, and the expenses. It also shows transfers in and out, so you can see from the big picture perspective, the total amount of the transfers. This section right here provides you with the details, so you can see how the funds are moving. So if you take a, a quick look at, um, at page, uh, AB three, at the top of the page, we have transferred out from the general fund to, you know, various funds to the city. And so you can see, for example, we transferred, uh, four hundred and ninety-five thousand, we're proposing to transfer four hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred dollars from the general fund to the GO debt service fund to pay the debt service on the two thousand and ten fire station bonds. We're also looking to, a couple of lines down, we're gonna transfer seventy thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars out of the general fund to the community grant fund program. It gives you a rough idea of how we're moving money from one fund to another fund.
Any questions?
Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome. So that brings us to the bottom of the operating budget. We'll move over and start on the general government cap, uh, budget, and we should probably work with those departments that we have present. If we have any questions. Paul, do you wanna give any outlines on the beginning of this?
Just again, Mr., Vice Mayor Shearson, um, the capital budget reflects what you've already seen in the operating budget in terms of the, the requests that were made by the departments. In most cases, there's really nothing out of the ordinary, with the exception of the fire department. We talked about the, uh, apparatus replacement fund. We've heard the council relative to looking at refurbishment of vehicles, and we'll take a look at that program. Um, there are a couple of projects, uh, in the museum department that pertain to, again, ongoing work at the museum, uh, consistent with the, uh, Welsh Whitley report. And Councilmember Coos, I'll have that report for you by the next, by the next meeting. Uh, you talked about the fire alarm replacement at the civic center. Uh, Public Works here is here tonight, they can talk about, uh, what's in their respective, uh, capital budgets, and then Mr. Corpron should be available Thursday night when we review port and harbors. The port obviously, uh, has a lot pertaining to what we're talking about in terms of the proposed Panamax vessels. The harbors budget, uh, we're at the end of the five million dollar bond that the council approved. The last rate increase, uh, for the debt service on that bond was also enacted last year. Um, so it's, it's pretty much again, uh, status quo, unless we get a, a major state grant, which they're, they're just becoming more and more competitive in the harbors. So if the council just wants to go through it, I think it's pretty much self-explanatory. But Public Works is here tonight.
Dave?
Yes, for Public Works Engineering. I'm just curious, on the dangerous building abatement, foreclosed property remediation, you know, seventy-five thousand, is that for a specific, is it a placeholder, the assumption we're gonna need that? Or is there a specific building we're looking at abating?
The Public Works Engineering starts on page sixty-four, page one.
Uh, yes, that, that is, um, just a placeholder, it's not for a specific building.
You've got a few to take out.
I don't know if any of the council has been over at Creek Street lately, but the owners of number one and two are slowly taking the contents out so they can get in and do the mandated inspections. I'm not making any promises, but there is activity going on there.
Slowly is the one, slowly. Unbox looking.
I've seen him underneath them.
So Carl, the dangerous buildings, um, when we get these buildings, they are, um, due to a lot of property tax proposals.
Most cases.
Does the borough get any of that money? If the taxes are being paid on property inside the city limit?
Uh, yes, if we are able to collect. And, uh, but that first, we, we're able to repay all of our expenses that we've incurred in, in maintaining and protecting that property. Whatever's left over, so we're paying for the property taxes. And yes, it's split between the city and the borough.
Why don't they split the expense of tearing them down?
Well, we, well, we recover it well.
Why don't they?
Yeah, I, I, I think we should approach that at some point, because they, they get the value off the property when people are paying their taxes, but when they come derelict, they all become the city's problem, problem. Maybe they should deed them to the borough.
Well, have to have control with legal counsel to see if, uh, that can be done.
They have different determination about derelict buildings in the borough. It's like half of them.
I, I mean, I just, it's just a question that, uh, I think that we should at least look into and see if there's a potential there to, to share in those costs, because it, it's not getting any better. Judy?
How many do we have now?
We have the ongoing list that we give you, at least on a quarterly basis. David, do you have a number off?
I think we have six, uh, foreclosed properties that we have right now.
That's not as bad as it was.
Yeah.
We sold, with that last sale, we, we sold most of what we had. Um, this last round of people, we picked up six. There's still a couple of properties that didn't sell, so they still maintain those, but they're not fully sold.
So that was on J two. J three, administration building, eight-vac project. You know, we talked about putting a cooling device and incorporating it into the equipment ductwork. Replacement of vehicles. Again, they're only replacing it once. You think this goes out to show the replacement for a hundred and ten thousand? Correct those. Public Works, uh, again, there's some valve replacement, uh, small project. And do you know where the administration building is, what we're talking about? It's the one out by Bar Harbor, up on the hill. So that takes us, uh, out of engineering. We're at the cemetery, K one.
I just noticed the engineering actually has three or a thousand for dangerous building.
Yeah.
It's, it's adding, that's it.
They have retaining wall replacement. Apparently the wall behind the, uh, animal shelter is deteriorating and needs replacement. Sounds like it'll be a block wall. We have some drainage improvements. Steve, what section are we gonna be working on next? Do you, come here? We take off.
Yes, sir.
Hello, Steve. Hello, Steve.
Cemetery.
Cemetery, Steve.
Cemetery, Steve. That's a difficult job, a lot of it's hand labor, and they do a good job of it. We also have some paving improvements out there. Moving out of that, brings us into the, uh, street department. I'll list all the problems, projects on L one, moves us to L two. And these are projects, yes. And these are projects yet to be designed. We just, we just tried, L two?
Yeah, oh, okay. I was like forty-five pages behind you.
I'm right there with you.
You just jumped.
I, yeah, I'm good at that. I can keep right on moving.
Make it so.
And this is what we utilize to continue to upgrade ramps and small projects, drainage icing problems, settling problems. So then, you know, one of the projects I saw, I don't know if it's where it's added here, was the construction of sidewalks on the downhill side of Bearinoff. Across from Countley School. And we never had sidewalks over there, but as you go up Bearinoff, some of those sidewalks are in need of replacement, I think, before we maybe start looking at putting new in. But I know there's some bus stop, they don't have bus stops anymore there either, do they? They took the kids' bus stops off of Bearinoff in front of the school.
Should have moved them back.
No, they moved it up.
They moved them back toward the apartments.
Correct, yeah, they moved them a little bit, but there's still a bus stop there, and it's not completely connected with sidewalk.
Okay. And, and the question I ask is, is are we doing anything for that upper section of Bearinoff from Carlana to Bearin, I know there's some bad sidewalks.
Yeah, and that, that's an excellent suggestion, and I would, I would suggest we do that with safer streets and sidewalk project money.
So in the same area, get that kind of cleaned up in there.
Right.
And a lot of that, it's still, we have to get into the public education where people just don't liberally throw salt on new pavement because we have some of that and it just melts the concrete. And maintenance comes, so.
I didn't know that.
Yeah. And you're not supposed to put chemicals on new concrete for a year, probably.
Seriously?
There's really not.
Yeah, standard practice.
One year they put red.
Standard practice.
One year they put red wheelchair ramps across the street and they salted it, and it was just like it was a melting popsicle. It just, it just ran into the road, yeah.
Back in the day, they used to. Do some kind of public, I mean, I'm sure there's a lot of people who don't know that.
Those roads that close in the winter time, for one thing.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Mine was one of them. I salted.
We just did the driveway at Helpling, that lower driveway before they did this big project, and it was because there was so much salting on that hill, it just, it sidewalked. Staircase and boardwalk reconstruction on L three.
Seriously, none of you knew that? I'm thinking it doesn't matter because the rain washed it all off anyway.
And this is kind of a placeholder.
There's no new concrete near my house, so it's not a problem.
Mark, is this stairway and boardwalk, is that what we buy materials out of now?
So there's, there's a couple areas we buy materials, but this, yes, this could be for materials for sidewalk, wood plank sidewalk, boardwalk.
It's not often that we have contractors yet going out and doing the reconstruction.
No.
We do those on our own and.
Correct, yeah, it's very hard to design and put out to bid one of those, those stairways. None of them are typical.
Yeah, none of them.
They're fun to climb. Except for their metal.
L four. Rock and tree maintenance. This started out as a Third Avenue project after the initial project. We knew that there was going to be trees falling and rush issues and that kind of stuff, and we kind of left it in there because we viewed it, when we get windstorms and stuff, we have to call a contractor in to remove dangerous trees and stuff. L five. As you see, prior years, we had seven hundred and fifty-seven, we're down to two seventy-five, but as Carl mentioned, we kind of spread that out in a few other projects. I was a little concerned when I first saw that. Are we going to do any seal coating coming up this year?
Um, that is a tool in our toolbox. We've not identified any streets that we were going to do that with this year yet. But that could come up if we see a street that we could, think it could benefit from it, certainly we're open to it.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know why we, I guess it's just the expense, but seal coating, I think, could help some of these streets because after about a, two years of, after a brand new pavement, they're fairly porous, and if you sealed them up, they might last a little longer. I don't know if we have the equipment for that.
Uh, Nick, maybe you can speak to that.
I think we're set up with what we've got, excuse me, for a lot of the crack ceiling, kind of the smaller undertakings, but if we're going to look at seal coating entire roadway, I think we'd need more equipment and more manpower. Or, or probably.
Contract.
Contract.
Thank you. L six, Boden Street, Rizno Way. That's a continuation of what we've been doing.
Yeah, it is, and, and I would mention too that we are carefully looking at what the state is doing because that ties right in to what the state's project is. And we had a discussion in the office just today about would it make more sense to hold off on this, let the state come through and then match into their pavement, or do our part and have them match in us? And we're kind of leaning towards now that the state's project is a reality, are about to be a reality, provided their funding goes ahead, we may just, just hold off and let them get paved through. So, and then we would tie ours into theirs. What we don't want to have happen is have them come through at a very specific line and grade, and then we find out that we're too low or too high, and the transition is ugly.
To clarify for the benefit of the council, bids for the tunnel to Tatsu, this project were open late November. There was one bid, C con, about one, one point three, one point four million, overestimate. D O T has put in a request for additional funding, and they seem to believe that that project will be a go, and they're just waiting to get a contract awarded now, so.
Yeah, so they bid the whole length of the project, but it's going to be done in two years instead of one now. Okay. L seven, brick maintenance and repair. So we're still working off that original sheer design punch list? It looks like.
Yes, that, that is correct. Councilmember Shearson, if we move back to L seven for a minute because, or not L seven, I'm sorry, uh, L six.
Yeah.
Mark's comments about holding off on Boden Spruce Mall, that's the first I heard of that. If that's the way you and your staff are currently thinking, that money of the hundred and sixty thousand, if we were to defer, would then be available for additional asphalt.
Over lanes, yeah.
So we can, we can look at that, and if we do decide that we are going to defer, we can reprogram that, and you can, we can make that decision early in the year, so.
Correct, that's an excellent idea.
Thank you. L eight, stormwater facility, use truck and repair. We got to start putting some money into these. And this, you can do some of this in-house, is that correct?
Yeah, um, one of the major projects in this line item right now is the Chatham Avenue Storm Drain Project, so that's one, one item. There, there will be other stormwater projects to come. There's some serious stormwater deficiencies that we need to take care of. One that stands out is in, is on Shumbar Road by the metal school. There's a big metal corrugated metal culvert. I know you've all heard about it before, but it's really bad. So we really are, need to look at that when we go to phase two of the sewer and water project that's, that hopefully will get state funding soon. We really need to look at that as being a part of that project. It's a very serious structurally deficient culvert there.
So is that the, the first section that dumps into Catch Hand Creek and then has a bend in it or something?
Yeah, yeah, it does, that's right. It, it does, it dumps into the creek, has a bend in it, and goes up, up Shumbar a little ways, yeah.
And that passes under the front sidewalks and lawn of Shumbar School, I think.
It, it's right in that area, it's can't be far. I'm not sure it's in the lawn area, but.
It's not the one that was, that was underneath the, the skateboard, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's right next, right next to it.
Right.
Not under it, but next to it.
Right. In all that discussion that was going on when I was still in the assembly, I thought that was supposed to be, that culvert was supposed to be taken care of at that point. It wasn't?
No.
It might have been a small street drain, but the, the major drainage for Shumbar great.
The big problematic failing culvert.
Yeah.
Was not dealt with.
No.
You're talking major.
Yeah, it's a big, and I, I just want to prep the council, but that is still out there.
Okay, yeah.
Is that considered a fish culvert? Does it have to happen?
Well, when, when we redo, when we redo it, there will be quite a few different requirements for that than you see in there today. So in all likelihood, it'll be an extra deep culvert, it'll have baffles in it to try to hold the stream load in there. And there's all kinds of, you know, regulations that govern that and dictate how we have, would have to do it. So what goes back in there won't, won't look like what's in there now.
And that's going to be a time schedule issue because they're not going to want you to do it in summer when fish stream is active, and then they're going to want you to do it during school.
Yeah, rock and hard place, yep.
Yeah, okay, that could be a difficult project. So Mark, what's the length of this culvert?
Oh, I, Seth, maybe you know off the. Yeah.
Here's where I climb down.
It's a long culvert.
It's about three, I haven't really met for your feet.
Quite huge.
Yeah, it's big, yeah.
It's a big culvert, it's a, it's a fun culvert.
There are stories.
Take a water chute out of it. Let people go through it in the water.
Water park.
Water, water park.
Yeah.
The B R H is amended all river. Bring the buses.
Bring us to L nine.
And replace it.
That's concrete road construction and repair. So one of the things I've always wondered is the cost of ownership. When you look at Madison Street or, you know, Upper Bearinoff, where we had concrete roads put in, we're not back there patching pot holes and doing all this kind of stuff. And so was, and I don't know how the cost of concrete and asphalt and multi-prep work has, has changed, but I think that we should, in some cases where we're going in and replacing the utilities, we should really think about the cost of ownership and whether or not we should be doing concrete versus asphalt. Because we'll replace a road four times, five times before we do something with the, with a concrete road, so. It's one of those considerations I think we should look at. Harris Street Bridge, L ten, that's been on for a while. I don't know if we can just put a whole brand new bridge in there cheaper.
No.
No.
Yeah, now based on what the, what they used for Troller, Troller Creek Bridge, no.
No.
We could buy a bridge from back east, they're always selling bridges.
So how confident that that three eighty-five is going to cover the cost of this bridge?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're pretty confident at that. Our list, the one caveat I would have is our list grew a little bit from the last bridge inspection. We're still, we're still pretty confident.
Yep. And so the repaint, now we, that's a metal understructure?
Um, yes.
Ivy?
I, yeah, I believe so, I'm going by memory. I defer to Seth, he's very familiar with that.
Good evening, councilmembers. Seth Brackey, Assistant Public Works Director. All, all's metal underneath and metal deck. We just recently had what's called a fracture critical inspection by the D O T. So for metal bridges, when they fail, they go in a bad way, unlike a, a timber bridge, which gives you, gives you a little warning. So what that requires then is more in-depth inspection where inspector gets right up next to every fracture critical member of the bridge to make sure it hasn't lost structural support. So Mark referenced that the list got a little bit longer in this last summer's inspection by the D O T, so we'll be addressing that.
So this will have to be a full containment underneath if you're going to blast and, are you going to metallize it or are you going to paint it?
So you're correct, because we're working above a fish stream, there's an environmental component, full enclosure, and then spray metallizing is the typical, the latest. That's probably what we'll go with. That's what we're targeting.
Thanks, Seth. Anybody else? L eleven. Water Street Trestle one.
Councilmember Shearson, this one, and the, there's another one. My, my point on Water Street Trestle number one is this is our share relative to replacement of the whole bridge that D O T is undertaking on our behalf. And the Sales Gorge is the second one, that's priority number thirteen, falls in the same category. So this follows Water Street Trestle number two that we're doing now. So I think we've been really fortunate in getting the state to, to buy in on these off-system bridges.
You think we're going to have the same luck with Dunton Street?
I'm sorry?
Are we going to have the same luck with Dunton Street?
I would be. I would be guarded, let me, let me put it that way. We'll continue to work at it, but getting those first three, that, that, that was no small feat.
Well, I think my biggest concern with Dunton Street is going to be the wear surface of the planks, the decks, that kind of stuff. There's, I know that we had some work done on the underpinning and we got a pretty good bill of health on that for a while, but we may have to patch that up until monies are available. And then we have L thirteen, street sweepers. Those things are a maintenance nightmare, they're in a dirty, dusty environment all the time, and they just don't last.
And we have postponed this like three years at my level, so when Public Works brought the capital improvement program forward this year, they did so with the knowledge that this was going to be up there for this, the, the streets division.
So L fourteen, as Carl had mentioned, Sales Gorge Street. It's not just the bridge, I think the abutments are going to probably need quite a bit of work too, if I'm, I'm correct, on the bridges. Is that right, Seth?
Yeah, are we Sales Gorge?
Yeah.
Yes.
L fifteen. This is, got by the landfill, Bear Mountain Fort, Bosworth Reconstruction. Been an unpaid area up there for some time. Been an unpaid area up there for some time. L sixteen. Bucie, Baker, Larson Street Improvements. Is that paving improvements or is that like ditching and culvert work?
I I would refer to Seth for that one.
All right.
So you'll see we have twenty thousand for twenty eighteen and then a larger dollar amount, uh, in twenty nineteen, a large dollar amount in twenty twenty-one. So kind of stepped it out. You'll see right down at the intersection where, uh, they tie into Tongis, there's a section there that's unraveling that I think we need to try to address with that smaller dollar amount. And then, um, continue on up the road with improvements.
Is that a, what what's the width of those right of ways up there?
Uh, they're they're narrow, uh, so it was created as part of the, uh, when it was in the borough and then, of course, we annexed it. So I believe that they're forty feet right of ways, but the roadway widths are much, much smaller.
Yeah. Is there any, is there any opportunity to widen those or are we just gonna work with what's there, Seth?
Uh, not for the dollar amounts we have listed.
Okay.
I think there is opportunity, um, if there was a need is, um, there's been proposals for development. There's large tracts of land back there. If there was a development that, you know, went in that warranted increased traffic, that's what I think would trigger a a road widening.
Okay. Thank you. We're on L seventeen. Bearinoff Protection Enhancement, that's one we talked about a little bit, which is across from the Humpy Elementary School. They didn't do that parking lot over this year on that side, but I think it was in their original plan and they just had to cut it out. So are we talking about adapting for that also if we were to put a sidewalk through there?
Yeah, we would, uh, we would provide depressed curb and sidewalks so that it could be used as a parking area in the future right there.
If I remember right, Mark, the utilities are on that side, power poles. We're not gonna put a power pole in the middle of the sidewalk, are we?
Uh, no, 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 nope, not gonna do that.
That's tradition.
So would it be a relocation or would we try to just move?
Yeah, and that that's kind of why you see that number there. So we worked with Electric Division to look at what poles. There's some poles that are back far enough. I I'm going by memory, but I think there was one pole that would would wind up in the way that we had to relocate. We got a price, uh, working with Electric Division and, um, included that in our in our budget.
So I I still, I guess, don't understand the driving force of putting a sidewalk on that side of the street. I know there's a, um, borough bus station, which is across from, what, Caden? Thatcher, where is it there?
Thatcher, yeah, uh-huh.
And there's an apartment building right next to that, so.
Right.
But that sets a short distance. There there's not much there. Then there's a crosswalk that could be available, I think, right there.
Yeah, just down from that, there's a crosswalk and then going up Bearinoff, there's, um, there's some need for sidewalk there as well, so. You know, it's kind of a a missing link in a high-density area right across the street from a school where you would want it, if kids are walking in that area, you want to encourage them to walk on a sidewalk and not be tempted to be out in the street, especially since the street is more narrow now than it was originally.
Yeah, I guess I just haven't seen, having kids going to Humpy for years, um, and grandkids, they just haven't seen the foot traffic on that side. The kids pretty much know that if they come up Carolina, they cross the street right there and then they're onto the sidewalk. And then, uh, everybody else seems to be on uphill side of that because there's no downhill sidewalk after Carolina going towards Bearinoff, so everybody's on the uphill side anyway.
I think it's because you have those new complexes there. There's more kids living in those.
Senior complexes?
Yeah, well, not the senior ones, but there, there's a, there's one that isn't.
Okay.
It's got, uh, families in it.
Yeah, I can see, I guess, from the bus stop to the two.
And there's a bus stop on that side. I've seen kids over there catching a bus going.
The the school bus no longer stops there. It stops up on Seventh Avenue. They moved, they moved the school bus stop to Seventh, so school bus is gonna stop on that portion of Bearinoff. Consideration.
Well, too, Bob, we got a lot of streets that only got sidewalks on one side. And there's houses all on both sides, so I think, to me, that's a lower priority.
And then L eighteen is the, uh, Holy Creek Culvert at, uh, Jackson Street. Another, uh, large diameter CMP pipe project going through the middle of an intersection. L nineteen, Public Works Street, it's, uh, the Baxter Truck. That's going out in two nineteen though. So if we're just sticking to the two eighteen budget, we're gonna move down, I think. Our next one is L twenty-two. And that's wall and abutment reconstruction repair. And this is on Grant Street? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. It's, uh, the abutment on, uh, on Grant Street, right where the wood deck starts.
Yeah, just failing, is it, that's a.
It is.
Is that a rock?
It is. It's, it's, it is. It's a rock wall. Um, and a part of it, um, I would say under the uphill travel lane, a part of that wall, uh, started to collapse. So it's in a slow state of of failure there. It's not in imminent danger of, you know, completely going, knock on wood. But it is in indicative of the fact that we have a lot of these. They're kind of out of sight and out of mind. So we want to get this one fixed. The next thing you're gonna see on this is we're gonna do some drilling down to see what rock is so that we can understand what the best and most cost-effective solution for this is gonna be. And then, of course, we'll have to, you know, in the dig up of this is gonna be substantial. But we've, we seem to run into these every year, uh, where they just start to go, they fall. We we just have to, I can envision this line item coming back every year, sort of akin to the safer streets and sidewalks. Projects.
Thank you.
Mark, where is this first project at? Is it right above the parking lot over here or where?
Yeah, so if you, um, go up Grant Street, just as you end the planked part and go on to the paving, right there.
Okay, so it's on the other side of Boden?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, that brings, thank you, Mark. That brings us down to, uh, M one, which is the solid waste division. List of all their projects on M one. M two, uh, cover generation, that's an ongoing budgeted issue. Uh, there's not a lot of soils on our landfill, so we end up having to shoot and crush rock in order to make our cover. It also helps with our roadway and we have capping requirements there. M three, solid waste building and design. So we're, Mark, we, what are we doing here? We, um, we got a couple of different phases here, right?
Right, so, um, this represents the, um, building, the sixty by one hundred building that, uh, we just awarded the foundation for. So that, this is the budgeted line item for that project.
And so, um, this will also do the, I mean, the total eight ninety-eight is gonna do the building on the slab.
So we're, we're, the building's still under design and it's very possible that, um, once we get the final numbers and the, you know, the building is kind of dialed in, um, we may be back in front of you, uh, talking about different options as to how to get that done. Uh, but at this point, I believe that the new funding is driven by the minimum reserves required in that fund.
Okay. Is there any opportunity for, um, loans or, I mean, if we're gonna use it for recycling, there there are some federal programs at one time that help fund recycling endeavors. I don't know if we're looking at grants or.
In order to enter into a loan agreement of any type that's considered to be a bond, you would have to go through the voter to get approval.
Right, thank you. M four. Door replacements. M five. That's in two nineteen, two nineteen, I'm looking forward at vehicles, bear belts. Any questions there? Brings us to N one. Which is our wastewater division. Two and manhole replacements.
Councilmember Seaverston, if I could just make one observation on on wastewater. With the exception of priority seven, which is, uh, water meters for business and commercial customers. Projects one through six are just all O and M, annual O and M projects. Because that's all we can afford right now. There is no major infrastructure replacement addressed. And we just don't have the revenue generation, uh, to support that. And that's in part one of the major reasons why we're recommending the wastewater rate increase.
Mark?
Yeah, I I think that's critical. The, just simply doing the O and M items, as Carl mentioned, really isn't sustainable. We have serious I and I projects that we need to get done. We also have scored some pretty good scores with some grant, uh, with some loan applications that could include a subsidy. Uh, all goes well, uh, so there is some, uh, free money on the table as well. To be able to, you know, capitalize on that, um, we would have to have the revenue to do it, so. Some of those projects are absolutely critical, you know, to the mission of wastewater division.
I and I?
I'm sorry, inf infiltration and inflow. So, um, you know, when the tide comes up, like we had today, a nineteen-four tide, and then you get a heavy rainstorm on top of that, you get a lot of water into your, into your system. And that all has to get processed at the plant. It it costs money in terms of chemicals to do that. It could cost money in terms of overtime when our pump stations go into alarm because of that. So, um, and then the the end result, and thankfully, our wastewater division, and Seth has played a a critical role in this, has has avoided having, um, the most serious implications of of, you know, either having a sewage backup, you know, or something like that. It's the kind of utility that you you just kind of expect your toilet to flush, right? And and it, but it takes a lot in terms of infrastructure here. It's a big investment to keep it, um, functioning properly and at the correct level in the terms of the regulatory agencies and how our residents expect it to operate.
We have how many pump stations?
Um, six. Yeah.
Thank you, Mark. N three. And four. And five. And six. And seven. And eight. So Carl, what is the difference between, I guess, the water rates and the wastewater rates? And whether or not the cost should be shared respectively due to revenues?
Are you talking with respect to the water meter?
Yes.
Installation? Well, that's how we've set it up, that it would be a fifty-fifty allocation against both enterprise funds.
So we're getting the same amount of water revenues as we are wastewater revenues?
No, I'm not saying that. I thought you were talking specifically about the expenditure funds for that CIP. I don't know off the top of my head.
Well, my my concerns are if if the revenues are gonna pay for these and the debt service, they should be proportionate to the revenue that you're gonna get back from them. It wouldn't be fair to make it fifty-fifty if one guy's getting twenty-five percent of the revenue and the other guy's getting seventy-five. Doesn't make sense.
We we've put it fifty-fifty because the water meter is basically, in terms of the capital investments, it's a fixed cost. As far as operations go, each division would be responsible for covering the cost of its operations. And it may be that the operating cost would be different between water and wastewater, but as far as the investment itself goes, we thought that that would be the best way to do it, so fifty-fifty.
Well, my concerns are is when you make an investment, you depend on the revenue to pay that investment back.
Right.
So if if this thing, as you see here, is a million dollars, and I'm getting my revenues back at twenty-five percent, I'm gonna pay it off in a lo- longer period than the guy that's getting seventy-five percent of his revenue back.
You know, right off the top, that a number of our large water users don't have a lot of wastewater in terms of the canneries.
Yeah.
So trying to come up with a proportional allocation.
It would be challenging.
It's gonna take some time if if you really want to go in that direction.
Well, I'm just trying to be fair to the separate utilities in regard to who is gonna benefit the most. Like you say, these larger commercials are not gonna have a big wastewater component.
I thought the only other thing I could add is, um, if you're a water customer, if you're a wastewater customer, for the most part, except if Carl noted, there may be two differences. But, so you basically have the same number of customers and what and what they're consuming is just, um, a billing function.
Yeah, I, the water meters are for the purpose of measuring the water. So how, except for saying, yeah, there's so much water going out below them, I don't see why wastewater is even helping to pay for meters.
Because you've you've directed us to go to a meter rate.
Yes. So we're, we're gonna base.
Well, if I might add, the, um, the wastewater rates are tied in to the water rate. So for example, if you have a residential water rate, you also have a residential wastewater rate.
Yeah, but it's just a flat rate that goes up.
Right, so we have a separate rate structure for water and wastewater, but we, they're both based on, on consumption. It's hard to measure waste going out, especially if you're to measure water. So the theory is that you take in a thousand gallons of water, you need to treat a thousand gallons of water.
Yeah.
There are some exceptions. Uh, the seafood processors is one of them. They take in a lot of water, but they don't dump that much water back into the wastewater system.
I think the same thing would be true with the shipyard because. I think the same thing would be true with the shipyard, because what theirs is off, out of, out of system. It was just a thought that, it, I'm, I'm trying to be equitable to both, and if one is gaining substantially more revenues than the other. I just thought that maybe the capital cost should be proportional.
Actually, I, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I think the annual revenues for water and wastewater are pretty comparable. I think they're somewhere between three and four million dollars per year.
Okay. Thank you. And again, we're gonna defer to the harbors. Is that the end of public works as we have it? And it's getting close to that hour, isn't it?
It certainly is.
Um, I guess we do have the police chief here, is he ready to maybe do police? And did we do building maintenance? Did I get through them? The maintenance didn't have a capital partner? Didn't see one. And we got finance here too, if we wanted to do that. So, um, let's go ahead on to police, that's E one on page thirty-five. And we did add one tonight. In regards to the repeaters. And ninety-six thousand five hundred seventy dollars. So is everybody pretty much there? Okay, so you have their combined projects. They have one, two, three now, do you have the? Other priority, um. E two is exit gate replacement and upgrade. So they're under the, they're under the cement pad, huh?
Yes, they are.
Is that tough when they malfunction?
Yes, it is. I believe that's nineteen eighty-five technology that's been there since the building was made.
So the newer ones, they have some kind of a?
I'm hoping so. We'll see what we can find, um, both, this, I'm hoping this, uh, this money will cover both gates, motors, and sensors to be replaced. The exit.
Oh, excuse me, so the wiring back to the comm should be fine, all that kind of stuff?
I believe so. I, I'm not positive. Um, the exit gate, we have some cracks in the, uh. In the cement slab when we leave the building, water gets in there, it freezes, the gates get stuck open, get stuck shut. And it's been a problem we've been fighting for quite a while. Uh, building maintenance was able to put a patch on it this year. We're gonna hope to get through the winter like that, but it, it's something that needs to be addressed.
E three. Patrol vehicles, and these are, uh, we just partnered up with the state on these, right, and, uh?
These are the explorers, yes, sir, we just, uh, jumped on the state contract.
Okay.
They're going, they're going away. They're underway out.
Okay, and these are, um. These are patrol vehicles, that what, um, we have what, three station cars now?
Uh, I, we should have at least three, yeah.
Yeah. So do these replace station vehicles?
They, usually they go out to take home cars, and then the take home cars will work their way back into the station.
Okay.
Yes. I think we should be close to getting rid of the Crown Vicks altogether, I think.
Those are little cars, huh?
Those are the ones that get surplus to the sea all the time.
Yes.
That's so weird. He's driving cop cars.
So, um, the next one, of course, is these repeaters. Do you use the same radios, type of radios, make of radios that the fire department does?
No. We use Kenwood radios.
Uh huh.
The fire department, I believe, is using ICOMs, I believe. Um, we went through APNT a while back to supply all of our radios for the re, the vehicles and the portables.
Okay.
The repeater quote we looked at was a Motorola product, which matches up to our console and comm center.
Does it match up to whatever the fire department?
Yes, I, I did talk, I, I talked to ProCom, he said that he can program all the radios to, to work into this repeater. And I, I don't want to speak for them too much, but I know that we do central communications. So I, I know that dispatchers are, are fighting that constantly with the police and the fire, both clarity and, and distance on what we can hear and how far we can hear. And it's, it's been a battle for a while.
So, does this repeater have the option for stacked radio channels? So, I mean, I don't know how public work radios are working, or our harbors are, but would we have maybe an option to add segments to that?
I think the package we're getting right now is just gonna be for police and fire. I, I think eventually, we probably could plug more into that and, and boost everybody's.
Yeah, well, because I think that overall, we do have issues with radio communication, and it's usually right in the middle of the storm.
Yes.
It's when you need it the most, so.
I know that as central communications, we provide service for North and South Tongus, and I know, again, that, that it's been a horrible system for our dispatchers to try to get help to those residents. Um, eventually, again, this pro, this project is simply for city, fire, and police. Um, I, I'm envisioning a time when, when North and South Tongus might tap into that, so that we would be hitting that repeater and the signal going up and down the channel, and it should clear up area-wide communications.
So Joe, when you, when you started into this process, could you talk to the contractor a little bit about the ability to expand that to. What we look at in the future?
Absolutely.
Is there something that we have to do today that would make that easier at less cost? I mean, I, I don't know. Could just something to think about?
Yeah, I would definitely talk to him about that. If there's other departments that would want to look into improving their signal too, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Do, do you know, is this gonna go into the, the KPU building on High Mountain, or do we have a clue where it's going yet? Are we gonna put our own building up?
Tentatively, we're going to look at using, um, the building, airport building maintenance, building over on the airport, Gravina.
Oh, so you're not gonna go to High Mountain?
No, that wasn't this, the proposal I got, the, the quote I got did not include High Mountain. That was a, when we did the radio study.
Okay.
I sat over at the airport in a car, and the tech rode all over the island, and that's how we got the area where we wanted to do it.
And it's not near the issue we had breaks, you know, take a helicopter to fix it.
Yeah, that was one of the, that was one of the things we thought about the.
That's the fun part.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, again, I think this is all I'm overdue, but I'm glad we've got something that we're prepared to do.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Bob, do you have much in finance in the way of capital? Actually, you have one thing. Let's get you out of the way.
Sure.
V one, on page fifteen.
Yeah, that's just a continuation of our, um, application and installation of our financial accounting system. There are three more modules we'd like to, um, wrap up. And one is the personal action forms. That'll put personal action forms in electronic format like our purchase orders. We can process them electronically instead of manually. Uh, we also have the E suite, which will enhance the customers of our utilities' ability to pay their bills. And also get, uh, statistical information about their accounts, such as energy consumption. Uh, historical energy consumption, which should be very useful for conserving energy. And then we also need to, um, uh, finalize the implementation of our, of our capital asset record. We made one attempt to do it, and it didn't go well, so we have to redo it again. Some of the numbers we put in weren't right. And so those are the three things we'd like to accomplish this year, or next year, I'm sorry, two thousand and eighteen.
Any questions? Hearing none? Is there any other departments here that have capital projects we have to talk about? I don't see any. All right. So. I think that's a good stopping place for the evening. And so when we come back, we will start in at the beginning of the general government capital. Projects, uh, again. And so, um. And our next meeting is. Is it seven?
Well, Thursday's your regular meeting.
Yeah.
But the budget's on each day.
Yep.
And then after that, it's, um, eleven.
Okay.
Are we gonna have a, no, because doesn't this affect CEPa, aren't you guys going to? There's a meeting on the fourteenth, isn't that when?
We are there on the, uh, go up on the thirteenth, come back on the fourteenth, so we'll be here for the evening of the fifth, is that correct?
Assuming the fight.
Assuming, yeah, assuming.
Oh, there, yeah.
The meeting is on the fourteenth.
Our meeting's on the fourteenth?
Yes.
Right.
So is it the twelfth, thirteenth that we're going to have? What was the CEPa schedule? Do you remember?
I thought we were flying up on the thirteenth.
Maybe it, maybe it is.
Fourteen.
Yeah. Maybe that's what it is. I knew it was, uh.
I'm showing that it's the thirteenth and fourteenth.
Well, we're going. Can you come back on the fourteenth, we'll be here in time for the meeting.
Right. That's the plan.
Yeah, that's the plan.
And so. We have three meetings, and we're gonna go through KPU and be ready to go and adopt the budget.
On the twenty-first.
Yeah.
If we have to add a meeting, if we have to add a meeting, we can do that.
Yeah.
And we have, remember, we have a hospital presentation on the twenty-first, and we also have the executive session for seventh and twenty-first.
The twenty-first, what, what time is that one?
What's that?
That's a.
That's the same, sorry.
So that brings us down to mayor and council members coming.
Good night.
Good night.
Yuli.
Good night.
Well, I, I have something, just. I just have to tell you that I participated in a scenario of reenactment of a drug buy-sell on Saturday. And we used radios, we used three unmarked police cars, and the informant had his own car that he used, and it was just very interesting. And the radios worked very well, in the distance that we covered. But it was very, and it was real enlightening on what they do. We do have a drug problem here, so it was, it was neat to ride along and to experience that.
And you got practice in doing a perp block too.
I found awareness of this one.
Good night.
I have nothing either. I talked to Lou, he is planning to be here on the seventh.
Okay.
Looking forward to, to seeing him and having that in the room. And so do I have a.
Send me.
Hello.